Okay, it is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and we'll do roll call. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Present.
Councilman Cock?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Great, thank you. Looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda, but I'd also like to add one thing to the agenda for tonight.
What's that?
The email that we all collectively received from Nikki, the attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I approve the agenda with that, or I second that.
Okay. So, we have an approval of the agenda from Councilman Henderson and Councilman Lavaca with the addition of the, now I have it here with me. Discussing the protocol regarding doing public hearing, or public comment over Zoom. Is that correct? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, or the entirety of the email.
All right. All right. So, with that, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, items one through nine, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And if it's okay with Councilman Henderson and Lavaca, if we put that maybe under new business, last item we discussed, would that be?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to city administrator report. Mr. Bush?
No report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lloyd? Do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, let's get started here. This morning, I attended the grand opening of our newest business on Cook Road this morning, the convenience store there, it's a nice little thing, and the interesting part is their gas was under $3 a gallon. And another subject I just want to breeze past is, I'm going to start working on getting the skateboard challenge for the kids going again.
Excellent.
And I hope you guys will support it and help when we need help, so we'll see if we can get that going by the fall time.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
I don't have anything other than wishing everybody here, since we're all here together on Valentine's Day, a half of Valentine's Day.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Two things brought forward by constituents. One, speeding on State Street as well as Ferry Street, hoping that people can be pulled over for it, actually passing cars on both streets, so I just want to pass that along if we can keep an eye out on that. Another thing that was brought up to me is that I have received a couple emails, as well as a couple phone calls, from constituents upset about the increase in utilities, and I know that that was a big discussion reviewed by the Utilities Committee and approved by council. A lot of it in part due to the inflation, as well as the increased dump fees over at Skagit County, all of which is out of our control. But, a couple people said that they had actually gone into the city where I made phone calls and that they were not provided information as to why the rates were increased, that just that they were increased, and if they had a problem with it, to call their council members. So, I just wanted to pass along that maybe somebody at City Hall could just briefly explain that to them, even just a quick minute would be really helpful and make them feel seen and heard, would be really helpful. Again, we're doing our best to keep our rates as low as possible and still quite a bit cheaper than what it would be with waste management, so I just want to pass that along.
All right, very good. And Kelly, I think you have them listed on, they'll be listed as of Thursday on our website as well, so that'll be advantageous as well. Okay, all right, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Just a couple of things. I've gotten several more complaints, some of them from the same people, about speeding. Luckily, we haven't had any accidents on township, but that's usually when I get the lion's share of the complaints. I was also contacted and received a letter from a constituent over on State Street about the rate increases for the sewer and garbage, and so this particular person is on a fixed income, and they're on social security, and their social security went up slightly, and the increase in our services ate up that entire amount. So, and just to clarify, moving forward, that the cost of business does go up, but anywhere that we can save the taxpayers money moving forward, this is one of the consequences of things getting more expensive, and it's just going to get worse. On the bright side, after doing a little bit of digging, we do have a reduction rate form for any of your constituents that qualify through the county for the excess in regular property taxes exemption, they can bring a copy from the assessor's office showing that to our billing clerk, and they can get a reduction in their rates, and we have these readily available upfront, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cock?
Yes, I had also had a constituent who is on a fixed income as a senior and struggling with the utility rate increase, and I provided similar information to everyone else, including the assessor's information where, but I think going forward, providing especially our most vulnerable or citizens on a fixed income, you know, I'm on social security, and it wasn't a great increase, so I understand how that's an issue. I also, two other things, I had made a comment about school buses on Carter Street, I have since found that there aren't, there're not supposed to be school buses on Carter Street, and I talked to some parents who told me that two things have helped with the congestion on McGargyle, and one is the second entrance to the middle school, and they're kind of lighting them up like ferry traffic, so it's getting them out of there, but it's still a congested area, and I think that roundabout will be a big help. One other thing I saw, I keep driving by the new Goodwill, usually to, you know, drop off my wife, and the parking lot has been full, it's a great sign for our new local business. Last night, my wife and friends had a delicious meal at a local restaurant, and today, I bought my wife beautiful Valentine flowers at a local store, so Seadrile has a lot of great local businesses, and please consider shopping local.
Excellent, thank you so much. Councilman Burns?
I've got a few announcements. Helping Hands has two upcoming events, Stuff the Bus, February 24th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Helping Hands Food Bank on 9386 Fruitdale Road, and they're also having an open house on March 2nd from 12:00 to 4:00. You can come by and tour the facility, and they'll have an impact report at 1:00 and 3:00 PM. Lager Rodeo is also doing a design competition, turn them in by February 29th, that's for their logo for this year. I also had the concerned citizen contact me about the utility rates, and I would love to see the posting of them side by side with the old and the new numbers, along with that information about the application for those people who are on a restricted income, all together in one spot would be wonderful. I think that might help spell it out for them. I did have a little trouble finding that page, because when I did a search for it with Google, it didn't pop up, I had to kind of rummage through the website to find it, so it might also be with the listing on the website. Went to City Action Days on the 7th and 8th of this month, met with all of our representatives on the 39th, had good conversations with them. Unfortunately, due to overruns on other road projects, especially infrastructure, it's very unlikely we're going to get anything for the Jones Johnliner Corridor, so we're going to want to seek funds from alternative sources. Unfortunately, that's just the way it goes some years, and so this year, it sounded like there was little hope of us getting anything out of them for our road projects.
Yeah, sometimes they surprise us. They've said that before, and sometimes they surprise us, but tonight, and as you've already read through your packet, you'll see that Mr. Freyberger is putting us in for the Raze Grant, which if we achieve that, that'll be very, yeah, it will be wonderful.
I did tell them that Mark was very creative, but we could still use the money if they could come up with it. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Mr. Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we had the committee meeting today for planning and business development, and that went pretty good. We opened it up with a presentation from McKenna of Relics Works over there in Mount Vernon, they do some work in various areas, so it was nice to see her ability to bring that forth and articulate it, and so we were able to provide some feedback and possibly work with her at another time with that, and then maybe the council will see that brought before them. It had a lot of the ideas for increasing greenery throughout town, and helping to beautify the entrances, the signage, a lot of what we've already been discussing for quite some time, but haven't been able to manage to do, and there were some conceptual drawings in there that were actually quite good, so I think we pretty much sent it back to get refined, and we'll have a discussion on that. There was also the discussion with the grant program, and a discussion with the, our community goals, our strategic goals, and how that goes, and we were moving a couple of those things around, but the presentation from McKenna ended up going about 40 minutes, so we didn't get a lot of time to discuss the others, but we will continue with that, especially on the next meeting. And then, there is that item that called Rainworks, I think we heard about that during that Love of the City presentation. That Rainworks product seems to be pretty good as an actual product, it could be something to see downtown, so we'll look at that and bring that before the council, and the idea at the time was to see if maybe the city employees can come up with their own design, and then be able to do the Rainworks as a kind of a thank you to the city employees, and then being able to kind of put their staple down if they wanted to. It's a very inexpensive thing to create some sort of eye appeal throughout town. Besides that, then the meeting went good, and we adjourned it, so. It is Valentine's Day, so happy Valentine's Day, hopefully everybody is able to get back with their spouses and enjoy that, for sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lavaca. Just a couple things. Last week, I was able to join a few people over at the high school. Governor Inslee came for a visit, and it just so happens that one of the teachers at the high school, he was in school with together, and they played basketball together, and he came for a visit, which was very nice, and his assistant who set it up is also a Seadrile graduate, so that was pretty cool to do that, and it was nice to hear what the governor had to say, and it was nice to meet him. It's nice that he came and spent some time in our city. The other thing that I want to make the council aware is that I have been appointed to the AWC Board, and we will be meeting three times, four times a year, we've already had our first meeting, we'll meet three more times this year, but just so you are aware, I may ask council members from time to time to consider sitting on a ad hoc committee. Oftentimes, they don't require a whole lot of time or commitment, but I think it is an opportunity for the council to have that opportunity to engage both, not only just citywide here on the board, but also statewide in matters that have to do with the small cities and large cities in our state, so don't be surprised if I ask you to consider something. Okay, moving on to public comment, it is 6:14, I will ask if there is anybody in the chamber who would like to make public comment? No? Okay. And online, if you have a public comment online, if you could raise your hand? And I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we will move on, I'll close public comment and move on to our unfinished business, and the first thing on the agenda tonight is the master fee schedule, it's Resolution 114124, it's a third read, and Kelly, I think you're right.
So, at the last regular meeting on January 24th, we went over the master fee schedule. There has been very little change since the first read of that schedule. One item in there is the fire code construction permit fees, there's eight places in there that have something related to fire fees, moving the cost from $50 to $60. We missed one of them in the first read, so that is the only item we updated in this second read, so I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any.
All right, are there any questions for Kelly? Councilman Lavaca?
Kelly, I'm just wondering on the timeframe of this, I know it's something that's been discussed for a little bit, but is this the best time for that with things going on? Could we hold off on the master fee schedule increase? It doesn't look like anything's too much in there.
The, all of the utility rates that council approved through ordinances at the end of last year are also included in the master fee schedule, so at minimum, those would need to be updated so that the master fee schedule and our utility rates that are being billed match. Regarding the other rates, there's not, the utility rates are the bulk of the changes, and the other items are things we haven't updated in quite some time, so I think...
They do look relatively small, and I do agree with you on that end, it's not like a huge amount, but it is something where we just, and I think that people are kind of like coming in, like the utility rate again, the PUD has gone up again, the, you know, taxes are up again, property taxes are up again, it's just another increase that they see, and I'm just wondering, is it needed right now, or is this something that we can actually hold off on and maybe revisit on those other items? Not the utility that was already pre-approved, but some of those items. I don't know how the council would even feel, or if that would be feasible, but...
If I could interject really quick on this, we do need to update the public records fee schedule as well, because it's currently not consistent with state law, so we do need to update that.
There's a couple other items in there as well that go up based on what is included in our municipal code, so some park impact fees, that goes up based on the CPIU, the June to June CPIU, and that is in our municipal code to be increased that way, so this is just adding numbers to it. We've added a new covered shelter for Memorial Park, we've increased our facility monitoring fees for holding events at our facilities, mostly to cover our actual costs, we have an employee who covers that cost, so covering costs of that. There's not a whole lot of items that I, in my opinion, can be removed from this, we have some items regarding business licenses, and if a business fails to pay for their business license, that there are fees included with that as well, and those aren't really about finding someone for not doing the administrative work, but the other background work, because it has to go to building and planning, fire, police, sewer, all of those things, so we've added some of those, although they, we don't use those frequently. And there's some information about transportation solutions from the Public Works Department that I think we'd be wise to update those annually, as has been our best practice. Any of the fees from building and planning, the other directors and Nicole could speak to those as well, if you have specific questions on those items.
I have a question regarding...
Kelly, to jump back in on transportation, that is actually in code as well. An automatic update.
So, Kelly, last meeting when we decided to hold off on voting on this, there was a couple of fire-related ones that we weren't clear on.
Yeah, there was one fire item that we hadn't updated, from $50 to $60. Frank, do you want to touch on those items?
Yeah, what was the question, Councilman Henderson, on those?
So, when we were getting ready to vote on this last meeting, there was a couple of fire-related ones that we were asking, like what they were, and we didn't get an answer on that, so we decided to hold off.
I believe, I went back and I tried to review the video, and I think what was asked was the fire code operations permit, what that was, and if that's still, was the only question that I found anyway. That's kind of, it's something that I had Jana go back through and look and see what we've been utilizing that for in the past, and in the past three years, she found zero times we used it for, but what it is, is you have a construction permit where they come in and they want to actually start building, then they have to pay the fee to get going, and it's all on the developer, the construction folks that are starting these new projects, and operations permit would be something that we could utilize for, say, we have a 20-acre parcel that's going to, it's for sale, and we may have, and a lot of times this does happen, where we'll have multiple developers come in before they sign a purchase and sale agreement, or start developing that area to see what they can do or can't do, and what if, and how about this, and then a lot of times, our folks will put hours and hours and hours into the plan reviews of this stuff to determine what the roads are going to need to be, and, you know, wastewater will do the same thing, and Mark's crew will do the same as well as Nicole's, and this is one of those things that we can actually go out and say, you want a meeting with this, then we can charge this fee, so we're not spinning our wheels on a property 10, 15 times, and they have some skin in the game as far as to why they're utilizing our resources. Like I said, we haven't used that one for at least three years that I know of, and these fees that you have in front of you haven't been changed for, I want to say, 10, 15 years maybe on our side. So, when we were looking at some of our budget problems those last couple of years, as far as trying to cut things here and there, we were also looking at revenue streams, and one of the things we found on the fire side was, we didn't have a lot of revenue stream coming in from some of these permits, and with Katie and Jana, Katie before, and now Jana in place, and the amazing job that they're doing, they're getting us on the right path, and it's getting a lot more streamlined and electronics, so with that, we had Jerry go out and look at all of our surrounding areas, we looked at Oak Harbor, and Seattle, and Everett, and Burlington, and Mount Vernon, and all the things that they were doing to kind of stay in line, so we don't want to be way above anybody else, but we didn't want to be too expensive either to ward off development, so, and there were some, a couple different ways that folks were doing these codes, and one of them was kind of a all-inclusive, you're going to pay this amount no matter what it is. We kind of looked at what we're doing now as kind of a better way to help the smaller developers, the residential folks, because there's some different levels in there instead of a one all-inclusive big purchase, so like you see in there, the fire alarm panel, if there's one panel that's already in place, it's only $50 to come in and get a new one, so you don't have to pay an overall construction permit and everything. Same with, you know, there's a different fee if you're going to put in a 150,000 square foot retail versus you're going to put in a fourplex for offices or something, so it's kind of paired in there so we can kind of charge as the amount of time and effort and energy that's going to be put in from our offices, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
You betcha, sir.
I just got one more question about...
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, with the building and construction, we have these impact fees, I didn't see, I was trying to find the sewer impact fee, and do we have a sewer impact fee and a connection fee, or just a connection fee?
It's a general facilities charge, GFC is what it's called in the ordinance, but it's in there. And I'll just mention also, just to kind of echo what Nikki and Kelly said, we also have the traffic impact fee, which is a code requirement, that we update that by the National Construction Cost Index, and it's fairly important that we get those in place, you know, as quickly as we can, because we have a lot of activity coming in, and the developers will vest when they come in at a certain point in the process, and we want to have those updated, because that's very important with both the growth of the city and the condition of our infrastructure, that we stay ahead of those things.
And are we comfortable that those fees are getting adjusted high enough so that our development's paying for our infrastructure?
Yes, I know you're new to the council, Alan, but we did an extensive process, in particular on the sewer fees, to look at that. We update our capital plan every year, and we have a consultant that we've used for quite a while that reviews those fees and makes recommendations on both the sewer charges for each service, plus the impact fees.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I've got one. The city attorney said that we aren't currently in sync with state law, and that's not the word she used, but I lost it, so I'd like to know if she could tell us where we're out of sync with state law.
So, there are things that we can charge for under state law that we didn't have worked in, and there are other things that we had in there that the charges were higher than what the state law authorizes, and so we wanted to make sure that we were getting in line with the RCWs. The other thing that was really important, especially to the police department, is being able to have consistency across the board, not just having a police records, public records schedule and a general schedule, and there are things in there that are specific to the PD that we have calculated the actual cost of the time to process those records, like with body cam footage, we have used the actual hourly rate that it costs the city to process those, so that the city can recoup their losses there. So, in general, we've just gone through and cleaned it up and made it consistent with state law and what the state law authorizes us to charge for public records requests.
All right, thank you, Nikki. Lieutenant Sorstall?
Yeah, and if I could add to that, our fees have been much lower than what other agencies charge, and our fee schedule is not modern, and if it doesn't predate police body cam, it certainly predates wide use of police body cam, and so when people make records requests for this, it's very labor-intensive, so we have one employee who, I would say she's full-time, but she's honestly putting in overtime every week to keep up with her requests, has to go through and redact sensitive information from this video, second by second, frame by frame, so in some instances, it can be faces, it can be officers' computer screens in their cars, it can be license plates, it can be any number of things, and it's very time-consuming for her, and because our fees are so much lower, if they're charging anything at all, we have found that some YouTube channels are requesting our body cam for use on their for-profit YouTube channels, and so it seems like an unfair burden for our department to bear, to do this very labor-intensive, high liability work for for-profit channels, for example.
So, if there are no more comments, is there a motion to move forward with this? As I said, this is the third read.
I just have one more comment, if I may, Madam Mayor.
I just have one more comment, if I may, Madam Mayor. On that fire alarm panel you were talking about, and it says new, that's why you put it in there, so you can separate it out, to make it more efficient for the builder?
Yeah, and not just for the builder, like, say, there's a business out here that's had one for ten or fifteen years, it gets water damage, the panel itself just needs to be replaced or updated. This is a way that, for fifty dollars, they can just have it replaced. We already know what their needs are. Whereas, a brand-new building will have to have a review to see what they need, what the determinants are, what kind of ADA compliant flashers they need, how many sprinkler heads, whether it's a cellular connection. So, there's a lot more engineering and review that goes into that process, rather than just a panel-for-panel replacement.
I appreciate all you guys speaking on that. It's important, because if people say, well, the council voted it in, and point to the council, and we vote stuff in, it's nice to be able to go back and have that discussion of why, and a clear understanding, as well as, you know, we can reference an event or an evening that they can actually watch and see. So, thank you for being patient with my questions, I appreciate that.
I have one other question, too. The, I was curious about the body cam use on YouTube. There had, I thought there was some kind of state legislation, or maybe it's just proposed that would limit, you know, kind of nuisance public records requests, but you're, you can't, no, yeah.
No, and Nikki could probably speak to that in greater detail than I could. There are laws regarding to the maximum fees that we can charge for that, but there's, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit a nuisance. They have a right to, we must be transparent and provide information if they request it.
How far do they go back? Do they go back weeks and months and?
Depending on the video, yeah. Some videos are kept indefinitely.
Yeah, all right. And then, I imagine a lot of the other body cam is court-related, right?
So, we would release body cam if something is going to court, would go through the prosecutor's office. That's, we don't send that redacted, that would go over in its entirety. And when I mentioned that this is a high liability procedure for us, the challenge is that we have certain timelines that we have to meet. And so, when we have this ever-increasing workload, and just the same staff, it becomes very challenging for them to keep up with that. And I know it's, can be stressful for our staff at times, that they've got these deadlines that they've got to meet, but they can't control the flow of work that's coming in.
And the reason I mention nuisance suits is there's, I'm aware of, or maybe they're gone, I hope so, the people that will file massive public records requests with the hope that you don't get it to them in time, and then they can file suit.
Yep, and that still definitely exists.
Okay, thank you.
It definitely is still a problem. I know that there has been work this session on bills to limit that, but it has received mixed reviews, and I suspect it won't go anywhere. But we do still have clients that, one in particular requister, that is a serial requister, who waits for a year and then files suit. He doesn't even bother to clarify what it is he's asking for, and he's gotten a lot of money out of a lot of public clients.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more. It's, this concerns the solid waste rates, and coupled with the sewer and stormwater rates. So, during our report, I think each one of us mentioned in one way or another that we were getting massive public backlash from that. And I thought that this had already been voted on at the end of last year. So...
It was. Yes, we went through a four-step process on that. I don't know if you saw the emails that both Kelly and I have sent out in response to this. There was first, in October, there was a Public Works Committee meeting about that, my first presentation on that. We followed that up with a full council study session meeting to talk about the rates. Then we had a first reading and public hearing, and then we had final adoption of that, I think it was on November 1st. So, this is quite an extensive process, including the public hearing for that. One thing Kelly and I have talked about in light of these requests that have, or these comments that have come in, is adding to our process and actually putting a notice or two in the billings of when these various things are going to take place with council, so that if people want to have, have their input back at that point, they can. But again, you know, this is like a lot of things that involve the public. It's not until it kind of affects the wallet that they start noticing that these things, oh, this was on the council agenda, and, well, I don't read those. Well, that's the thing you're going to encounter going forward. But we can do that much more, at least, with making sure the notices are out in the utility billings.
Oh, absolutely. And I would advocate for anybody to pay very close attention to, you know, what happens in their local government. My question wasn't particularly about the rates, it was more of that we've all been hearing about this, that people have already been paying for it. I thought it was already voted in, and yet we're voting on it again tonight. And I was curious as to why.
So, we removed all of the rates from our municipal code last year or the year before, and moved them all into the master fee schedule. So, although we passed the ordinance for the new utility rates, and we've implemented those utility rates, we also have to implement them in the master fee schedule, as basically all fees are included in this one schedule, instead of updating individual parts of our municipal code. So, this part, especially for the utility rates, is more of just kind of an administrative part of it. Some of the other rates in here aren't included anywhere else, but that's why you'll see that. And I know this isn't part of your question, but one reason you're getting a lot of questions now is that we bill one month after the service. So, all of the new utility rates went into effect January 1, 2024. People get billed for the services they were already provided on February 1. So, people are, the first time they're seeing their updated utility rates was on their February 1 bill.
Thank you. That clears up why we're seeing it on this report, just for transparency sake. Thanks for answering that.
Just one thing on what Mark said. Is there any way to solidify that a mailer will go out? Or is that just, right now, it's, you guys have had the discussion, is that something that the council should make a motion on, or would that happen going forward? How do we ensure that that will go forward, that they will be notified that if there's a utility rate increase, they're invited to the council meetings, or to email us with their input?
I'm not sure that a council motion is necessary, but that's up to yourselves and the mayor. But currently, two months prior to the new bill coming into effect, we don't have a separate mailer, but we include a comment on the utility bill that the utility rates will change for January service. So, we already have that part of it in place. And then, the second part, we hope to, or we plan to implement, is including on that bill in September and October, that this process for the 2025 utility rates will be starting in October. You know, they, we haven't solidified the wording, but it would say something like, "Public hearing will be held on X date." You know, submit, you can submit public comment, or come in and speak at that public hearing. That's our plan, to do the two bills before the public hearing on those bills.
Could I make a comment, just to plant a seed for future? If the rates go up for utilities, is there any way to, just looking ahead to the next year, you know, depending on the situation, obviously, and the finances, but just to consider at least freezing the rate for the most vulnerable people, people on fixed income, seniors, that kind of thing? Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, currently, we can adjust it each year, so that'll be up for discussion in October, around October of this year. But currently, it's set at eighty percent of the current rate, and that's how we've been calculating it. So, those rates go up as well. But that is definitely something for us to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe?
Two things, point of clarification, just to verify my understanding of this. So, we have to operate these utilities as if they are a separate entity from the city and keep them fiscally solvent. So, when we're raising these rates, we're not, we're not going in excess of it so that we can turn a profit. Correct?
That's correct.
So, I would appreciate it if, when we do notify people, that we put something in there to make them understand that we're not just raising it because we think it's fun, or we're going to spend it on sidewalks or something else. It's because that's the increased cost of processing the sewage, the garbage, picking it up, buying diesel for the trucks. I would really appreciate if that's in there somewhere along the way that they understand that. We're not doing it because we enjoy it, we're doing it to keep it fiscally solvent. Thank you.
So, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the master fee schedule resolution 1141 to Act 24.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve resolution 114124, updating the master fee schedule. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Great discussion, thank you. Moving on to item number two, the 2024 Budget Amendment Number One, Ordinance 2066-24, and this is a second read. And Kelly, you're back on. So, this is the second read. The first read was also discussed at the January 24th meeting, also held a public hearing. Only a couple adjustments from the first read, and those items have been highlighted in the 2024 Proposed Budget Changes Document. One of those items was removing the HR manager position, as voted on at the last council meeting. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of other significant adjustments from the first read. Okay, are there any questions for Kelly?
I just have a general question for whoever can field it. Have we had any dialogue with the school district about the SRO?
Yes, we have had dialogue with the school district about the SRO. We meet with the school district monthly, with their senior team and our senior team. So, we've been talking about it literally for years at those meetings. But we've also been to the school board recently to talk with them about the proposal, just kind of the bones of it. We don't have a draft agreement yet, we have one internally circulating right now. But we plan to send that over to the school district staff here shortly, and then their goal is to have it before the school board sometime in early March. So, we would have it before you, right around that time as well.
And when could we expect to advertise and hire for that position?
I can comment on it, but I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Sorstall.
As soon as it's approved, we can begin hiring for that. We have an active hiring list right now, and I check for new applications almost daily. We'll get right on it.
Councilman Lavaca?
Madam Mayor, actually, my question's along those same lines. On that SOC, are we going to, are we paying for that officer, or is there going to be school funding out of their, out of their budget from the property taxes and the levies they've gotten to reimburse?
Yeah, the school district has money from their levy, as my understanding is, they promised that to the voters when that was approved. So, that money would be funding their contribution. They would pay seventy-five percent of the position. The way it's currently proposed and been discussed, we would pay twenty-five percent. The twenty-five percent is what we had in our Prop 1 for police back in 2019. So, but, you know, the voters have spoken, so to speak, leading us in this direction from prior thought, and the split that we've talked about is seventy-five, twenty-five, mainly based upon the amount of time the officer would be with the school district versus with the city. So, in the summer, the officer would be reassigned to the city, that's where the twenty-five percent comes, seventy-five percent being the rest of the year.
Cool, thank you. And then, one other question, Kelly. On that amendment, it's not anything there, but just a quick question on 2025. I know that we build our budget ahead, but are we looking pretty good for 2025, as far as where we're at?
We haven't done significant work on 2025 yet, but...
In comparison in the, in the 2023 projections of 2025, are we looking?
Yeah, I would say, you know, we're looking good for 2024 right now, although, you know, we're always trying to make what we have work and stretch with how much we need to grow. But currently, we don't have any significant concerns with the 2025 budget.
Thank you.
Right. There's no more discussions or questions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, and that is, okay. Opposed is Councilman Joe Burns. Motion carries six to one. All right, moving on to amendment to the municipal code to update sidewalk cafe regulations. And that is Ms. McGowan. Hello, Nicole?
Hello, hello. Hope everyone's having a happy Valentine's Day. So, we had our first read on the topic of sidewalk cafes and streeteries on January 24. But for a brief recap, the purpose of the recommended amendments is to update the existing sidewalk cafe regulations. I want to clarify the requirements for the construction and appearance of these structures. Right now, people can apply for a right-of-way permit to construct a permanent sidewalk cafe, but the applicable regulations are a bit ambiguous, and leaves a lot to be kind of left to interpretation. So, these recommended amendments, they kind of clarify those things. They also contain similar amendments to allow for permanent streeteries. There was talk last time of the ongoing concern regarding the availability of public parking in the downtown area. I do want to reiterate that that concern was taken into consideration when drafting these regulations. The areas with heaviest traffic volume, like Metcalf and State Street, as well as any state routes, are specifically excluded. These are very few areas that you can actually locate a streetery in the downtown. And planning staff is given the discretion to restrict the construction of streeteries based on parking, among other criteria. So, I do also have an attachment one in your packet, a statement from Mark Freiburger, Public Works Director, kind of reiterating that statement, that these streeteries, as recommended, are not cause for concern with regard to parking. These will help to beautify the downtown, and will bring more active pedestrian interaction to our downtown businesses, help those local businesses, both existing and new, to achieve success, maintain success. So, being receptive to the council, what I have done is included two versions of Ordinance 206523. Version one includes the amendments as they were recommended by the Planning Commission, including both the updates to the sidewalk regulations, and including regulations for streeteries, and a new definition for streeteries. Version two of the ordinance just has the updates for the sidewalk cafe. So, tonight is the second read, so I'm asking for action tonight. So, I'm happy for questions or discussion.
Councilman Diamond?
I just, I have a question in regards to the streeteries. How does this affect public works and the street sweeper and all of that? Is, how has that come into play in regards to the city crew cleanup around it, whether or not they're in the way of daily, weekly cleanup?
Yeah, it is written into the draft amendments that it is possible, that will require removal of these, in the case of the street sweepers or snowplows needing to come through. But I don't know if you want to speak more to that.
Yeah, we really haven't had any difficulties that I'm aware of. We've only had the one, actually, that's in the street itself, and they've been able to work around it all right. The owner's been pretty cooperative about keeping the area policed up, and we haven't had any issues. The new RAVO sweeper we have makes a pretty tight turn. And so, with our, with our old... And so, with our, with our old broom, it would have been more of an issue. It's just not much of an issue for us.
And I'll add to that as well. There is a requirement that the owner of that business that it is associated with is required to sweep in and around the sidewalk, the street, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Yes, go ahead, Kev.
Thank you. As far as the sidewalk cafes, my only concern is, again, with the garbage cans and where they are placed so that it can still be ADA accessible and potentially watching out for the big trucks pulling up in, so that people can still get around safely. I am not in favor in any sort of form for streeteries. And I, I personally think that now that the COVID restrictions are lifted, that the one that is downtown should be removed. And that's my thought on these issues, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
I do have concerns about the streeteries, just from conversations with businesses downtown. I understand that it's a minimal impact parking, but for me, it, it's just not something that I'm interested in continuing. I love the sidewalk cafes. If the sidewalks were deeper, I'd love to see more of them. But I don't necessarily like the temporary look of the streeteries and then having those parking spaces taken up with it. In turn, basically making it so people are parking in front of the businesses adjacent instead of the business that they're, they're going into. That's just my thought on it. But thank you for taking all the time to put into this.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I, I agree with Councilwoman Diamond and Councilwoman, or Councilman Burns on that. It seems that the streeteries, they kind of branch out into the street and they take up public property as a business when they purchased a business. Now, having some areas to sit outside during summertime around your place, I enjoy that. I think a lot of communities have that, and it's a great way to just enjoy your downtown. But when you start taking up actual public space with your business, it, it makes it difficult because ultimately every business would have that same fear challenge. So I would not be in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just, Madam Mayor, I was on the planning commission when this was extensively commented on. And the planning commission also had similar concerns about, you know, sort of the taking of public space. And I've, I'm ambivalent about it. On the one hand, it does provide businesses with some extra space. And I think that's one of the benefits to it, if it's done correctly and with, on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I know that leave time for speak, but I did mean Councilwoman Kestie when I said that. Thank you very much.
No worries. Okay.
I guess I ought to chime in too, and I expect you two after me, Kevin. But, so, I, I also take issue with a, with a permanent-on-the-street fixture as we're the business that everyone is talking about, but hasn't mentioned their name, on Ferry Street. The other thing that doesn't excite me is that if we're gonna let one business do it, but we're excluding Metcalf and State, but Ferry's just as busy of a street as the rest of them. So if, I, the safest street to have it on, in my opinion, would be Metcalf, because you have to stop at every single block. But once you get to that intersection on Ferry Street, it's, it turns into a raceway, which leads us into the public complaint about speeding, you know, but it all ties together. So, if we, if I was to have any kind of a, a warm feeling towards having a streetery, it would be almost a seasonal thing where the business would apply for it, put it out. And I, I know that there's a, you had a stipulation in there about moving it for snow plowing or emergencies. So that would mean that it would have to be at least somewhat movable. So I'm, I'm not really for year-round letting, letting the parking spots get taken up, essentially. Thank you.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yeah, I was on the council 15 years ago or so when we first tried those things out in the street and it didn't go over too good. But somebody mentioned, you know, I'll say, taking a property. How come we're gonna give some government space to some eateries? But what about, you know, a clothing store or something? Shouldn't they be able to get part of the store? How are you, how are we gonna, why are we picking winters? You know, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
If I may, I'm just curious, do we have permanent clothing stores outdoors? Incidentally?
No.
I can't think of any. Okay.
Not as far as I know.
I do like the idea of seasonal. That could be maybe a winter cafe for a little bit or something, so. I just don't like the idea of permanent storefront properties taking up street parking.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
I would make a, a motion to update the sidewalk cafe regulations without the streeteries.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Henderson, to move to adopt version two of the ordinance 206523. It's an amendment to chapter 1044 of the Sejuilli Municipal Code to update the existing sidewalk cafe regulations only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
And thank you to the planning commission for all the work that they put into this. I know there was a lot of time. Follow the planning commission.
There was.
Yeah, so thank you for your time on it too, Councilman.
Madam Mayor, this is a little out of ordinary, but I was just wondering on that, number two of the amendment for the municipal code, would I be able to ask a question? Because I wasn't here on the 24th, and Joe, you voted opposed. You don't have to answer by no means, but I was just curious to why. Would I have time to ask that question?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking. Go ahead, say it again, please.
So, we voted on the amendment to the budget, and Joe had voted opposed. And I was just wondering, normally we'll hear each other's discussion and kind of understand why somebody's voting a certain way. And I think that helps the council also. I was just wondering if I can ask that question of Joe, if you're willing to answer, you don't have to.
I realize I didn't chime in and give my two cents. I was opposed to removing the HR manager from it, so that is why I voted in the way that I did. I hope that we see that come through in the future, but that was my reason for opposition.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question. All right, moving on to item number four, which is the, speaking of sidewalks, the sidewalk municipal code, ordinance 206424. This is a second read and possible adoption of the sidewalk replacement program, which is resolution 113624, second read and possible adoption. Okay. Mr. Freiburger?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, we did have our first hearing on this on the 24th of January. And we come tonight as a second read and possible adoption of this. And again, this is cleaning up the municipal code. The sidewalk provisions in the code were first adopted in 1913 and really unchanged since that time. This does not change the basic tenet of that, which is the adjacent property owner is responsible for maintenance and repair of adjacent sidewalks. This gives staff a little bit more clarity to give to the public on what we do expect and what we're willing to offer to help them to make these repairs happen. And if you have any additional questions on that, I'd be glad to address them, but I believe that pretty well covers the matter.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Freiburger? Or any comments? Councilman Burns?
I think it's a great idea. I appreciate that your staff is willing to take it on.
Anyone else?
I have a question. In looking at this, where, so, in a nutshell, it's basically asking the homeowner to take responsibility for all of the sidewalks in front of them, but the city has the easement for the pub, public to come through and use it all the time. Is that correct?
That's correct, but this is not a change. This is in accordance with what's been in place since 1913. It's not a change from what we've been doing in the past. What we are clarifying is what the city can do to participate in that progress, process. We have had a sidewalk participation policy in place for some years where we will remove the existing sidewalks where they're damaged beyond repair and, and dispose of those and then furnish the base walk, rock for the homeowner. And they will hire or, if they're capable, do the replacement work themselves, which does save money. And we've added a second methodology as well, where we actually would give them a proposal to actually replace the sidewalks. And that'll be coupled with something that you'll see for award on the next council meeting. We're bidding right now a on-call sidewalk repair and maintenance contract that'll allow us to put legs to that second provision that I just mentioned.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
Has there been any thought towards using any of our ARPA funding to do some sort of grant proposal for people to be able to come to us with, and we would be able to, on a first-come, first-served basis, to help them with those costs? That we could use the ARPA funds to do that, or is there any thought?
I'm not totally sure we can use them for that, but that's a question for Kelly and Charlie. Before they answer that, I will say though, one good development that's happened recently. I was contacted last week by the Transportation Improvement Board. We are actually doing a project under their Complete Streets funding right now, where we are repairing a couple of longer sidewalk stretches, one on State and one on Nelson, I believe it is. Couple of blocks in each case in the vicinity of the schools, which is kind of under this. We could be going to the owners in those cases as well, but we do have that state money to do those. And we're doing some other ramps in association with that. They've expanded that opportunity and they have requested proposals. And they've actually got two different dates for that, to where we can request funding to do other eligible type of things. And we had coincidentally just completed a survey in the downtown area, the core area, the three blocks east and north, east and west, north and south of Metcalf, and had identified quite a number of locations. What was behind that survey was you passed recently a sole source for precision concrete cutting, if you remember that. They're a company that has a proprietary process for, for grinding off raised sidewalks up to a certain point. You can go up to about an inch and do that effectively, much more than that, and you, then you weaken the sidewalk too much. And so they did an extensive survey and gave us a spreadsheet with all those results. In the process of that, they identified 38 locations where either ramps or sidewalk panels were too badly heaved or damaged or cracked to do that in that area. And so we are actually going to be preparing a grant proposal to do those 38 locations, which will go a long ways towards what Councilmember Kestie is talking about and should pretty much take care of most of the high-traffic areas in the downtown area. So it's a great opportunity that's coming up. I'll be coming to you on February the 28th to ask for your authorization to submit. I think we'll be ready by then. There's two opportunities, either due on March 1st or April 1st. We're hoping to do the March 1st application because that'll allow us then to add that work into the contract we're already designing under the First Complete Streets program, so that's, that's a bit of good news. There's funding up to a half a million dollars available. The 38 locations won't take that much, but we'll utilize as much of that as we can. And again, that will relieve the burden on our adjacent property owners. And it actually goes a long ways on addressing the riskier locations, the higher-traffic areas. So I hope that helps. So I, I'll defer back to...
So Kelly and Charlie, could you perhaps give an answer to Councilwoman Kestie?
Yeah, so at this point, we have not evaluated that option, mainly because we don't have any unallocated ARPA funds. Everything is expended, planned to be expended within the plan that we currently have that council's approved. So we would need the council to give us direction on how you want to reallocate funds if you wanted to set up a grant program. So we were just talking about when we were planning to bring that plan back to you anyway. And it sounds like second quarter, but we could bring it sooner if the council wants to have that conversation sooner.
And at the, at the last meeting, we talked about, that we were, excuse me, planning to reach out to the state auditors to ask some questions about how, about obligating funds. So we did hear back from them, but unfortunately, we got a pretty diplomatic answer that, that didn't provide too much guidance. So I've reached out to some of our surrounding agencies to see how they're handling their unspent ARPA money. So just wait, kind of waiting to hear back from them. But like Charlie said, we plan to kind of recollect all, all the information on our ARPA funding and bring that back to council, hopefully, in the second quarter of the year.
Madam?
Yes?
Oh, I was gonna ask, how much is a panel of sidewalk? I would imagine you got anywhere from 80 to 150 feet in front of a home, but what are we talking for a replacement?
Yeah, that actually was requested at the last meeting, and Nathan was going to prepare that, and I haven't been able to catch him this afternoon to see if he'd figured that out. I think he was waiting to get the bids on that sidewalk program that I mentioned, or the sidewalk on-call agreement, and those don't close until next week. So I'll be able to tell you that next week, next council meeting, without too much trouble. I can tell you, I think it's about $5,000 to $10,000, probably on the lower end of that.
Laying some concrete?
Yeah.
But I think it also saves on possible lawsuit.
Yeah, yeah.
My name down?
I got a question. Basically, where we're at now is the same ordinance where the property owner's responsible for the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
We're not changing that.
We're not changing that.
But there's a little bit in here that you're trying to help the property owner, correct?
That's correct.
So they're still responsible, the city's just gonna try, try to help.
Yeah. Within, within our budget limitations and the rest of that, and, you know, and workload, we'll assist with these things.
So no promises, so if there's no money, it doesn't matter how many people wanted the program.
Yeah, right. And, and we have been, I mentioned it in the memo, we've been doing about five a year of these. We have people come in, they're, they're remodeling their house, they want that old sidewalk taken out. And so they're, they put it in their project budget to, to replace that little bit of sidewalk, and, and so we help them with it.
When I first came on the council, I actually went through that program. I did the city's program. And it was very efficient and it worked quite well. And we basically did it because the sidewalk was a complete mess and we were concerned about litigation. Somebody was to hurt themselves, we would be liable and didn't want to take on that responsibility.
Yeah, and we talked about this last time, but it, it is a liability for the adjacent property owner as well. You know, typically, they'll sue the city and they'll sue the property owner as well when these things happen. And the part of the impetus for getting this program more formalized, by the way, was a recent incident of just that thing. And we need to be careful when we are notified of issues like this, to not just ignore it. We need to, we need to notify the property owner, and we've got the methodology talked about in this, this protocol we've got here that tells how we will do that. And that gives clarity to my staff, so they know they can't just ignore this stuff. They gotta, they gotta actually come in, tell us about it. We write the letters, send them to them, and, and we go through a process. And then if they, if there's a truly dangerous location, and there are some, that we don't ignore that, we fix it so that the city doesn't assume that liability that, that belongs to the adjacent property owner. So it is a pretty important thing.
I got a couple, if I could. So, it, it's no big secret that the two most expensive things that the city owns is our road system and our sewer system. And to replace all of that would cost more than any of our buildings would, bar none. We do, we do have an overlay program that we do with the streets, and it, looking at grant funding... grant funding, is there any way we could get additional money for the adjacent sidewalks of the streets that we're overlaying?
Well, we do use the Complete Streets funds that we talked about as we can to do that. We've been concentrating on using that for the ramps mostly because that's a, that's kind of a double liability for us. We're subject to Americans with Disabilities Act lawsuits if those are not fixed. And I know it was before your term, but we passed, or we did pass an ADA transition plan, which identifies how we're gonna attack that in the future. And ramps are the number one priority. We didn't actually address sidewalks in the plan because as you cogently observed, it's a big problem. There's a lot of old sidewalks in town and, and we, we, we pick at that as we can. And we've had pretty good success in, in association with our overlay projects of fixing ramps. We've done quite a few of them. In fact, David Lee is working on an update or an annual report to our, our ADA transition program, which we'll have before you sometime in the next couple of months so you can see what progress we have made. It's been significant, but we have a lot to do yet.
Thank you, Mark. And another question I had, is the, is the tree en route, is that an addition or was that a portion of the 1913 one where the...
The code is pretty much the same on that. Trees are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. That's a very unpopular one, as you can probably imagine, because we have some of these, you know, four-foot diameter oak trees around town that are in what is a planter strip that they're, they've grown way outsized. And that's actually a lot of the problems we have with the sidewalk is root intrusion. So generally speaking, if you're gonna fix that kind of thing, you gotta remove the tree at the same time and that's pretty spendy.
Yeah, that, I just got a quote to take a tree down at my house, 6,500 bucks. So then my sidewalk, that adds another about 8,500 if I did my calculation right on the yardage. But, so that, that, that's a lot for a lot of people to consider, especially ones who can hardly pay their sewer bill right now. I, what I would like to do is, being the chair of the Public Works Committee, I'd like to, I'd like to bring this, bring this ordinance back to our committee and really try and find a robust way of getting funding to, to at least offset the cost to the homeowners. Would you be willing to work on that with me?
Well, sure.
Okay.
I think our next committee might be beyond my retirement though, so.
If, if you say yes, I'll believe you.
Okay. We'll certainly put that in the work plan for my successor at the very least.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
I, I have a quick question. Does the sidewalk replacement apply to the extra wide paths along McGargyle and Fruitdale that are heavily used by the public and appreciated by the public? But I would imagine a replacement of those would be more expensive. I know they're pretty new, but...
It technically would apply to those as well. On our tier, it's a little bit less pronounced because a lot of times you have strips where there's not an adjacent home on those as well, but many times there is too, so yeah.
And just to be aware on...
The broad answer is, is the responsibility's the same.
Because I sometimes see cars parked on those, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are no more comments, a couple things here. I know that you want to bring some of this back, but there's an option to actually pass it and then you can reevaluate it and we can do an amendment to it if you want to do that. But looking for a motion, the first one is a motion to approve ordinance 206424, which is repealing and replacing the Sejewili Municipal Code, Chapter 12.28 sidewalks. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Diamond.
With it being general in all of those areas then, and this, this also getting down to the nitty-gritty of the homeowner required to shovel sidewalks in that, are those homeowners on McGargyle going to go out and shovel the sidewalks for all of the kids walking to school based on our ordinance?
Well, they're supposed to. They generally don't and we, we do what we can with sidewalks. We haven't generally found it to be a huge problem. Most of the time when the snow is bad enough that it's covering the sidewalks, mom's driving the kids to school. That's what we generally see. So hasn't, hasn't come up as a problem to my knowledge, so. And I would say, you know, consideration for what, what Councilmember Henderson is suggesting on finding a way to fund is kind of separate from this. This is just putting in place a better program for us to reduce our liability and give us a more cogent method of notifying the property owners and those kind of things when we have to. So we'll, we'll take into advisement that with the next Public Works Committee meeting for sure to look and see. And, and as you know, we're always looking for ways to fund these things and, and as I mentioned with the Complete Streets, when we find them, we jump on them and we'll continue to do that.
I would support seeing that at committee as well. We've got a lot of time and energy and money going into our community north of Highway 20, but not very much on the south end. And so I would like to see that, a little focus on the community as well through that area.
Yeah, and I'd mentioned in the memo and we talked a little bit about it last week, there's a, there's a financing method called a local improvement district, which is actually a good vehicle for looking at stuff like this. It allows you to put together a, a larger project and, and actually do it with a bond funding source that could be paid back over 15 years rather than something you have to come up with all at once and it becomes part of the property tax statement. That's, that's a very proven method of doing this kind of thing. Because there isn't much out there for local streets, as I've mentioned many times here, and that, that does provide a possible methodology for doing that.
Okay. Well, with that said then, do we have a motion? A motion to approve ordinance 206424, which is repealing and replacing Sejewili Municipal Code, Chapter 12.28 sidewalks.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. The second motion is to approve Resolution 113624, which is adopting the sidewalk replacement program and sidewalk replacement program policy documents. Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Madam Mayor?
You bet. It's a motion to approve Resolution 113624, adopting the sidewalk replacement program and the sidewalk replacement program policy documents.
I thought we just approved that. Is that my, oh, sidewalk municipal code, so this one's a replacement program?
Yes.
Got it, two, two separate things.
So I had a question on that, on the replacement program. Whether or not we're gonna adopt the replacement program? So that one, within that one, one of the options for repair, the enforcement side of it, let's say lean on the property. If it's not, if the city has to come in and do it without cooperation from the homeowner, if the homeowner can't afford it, then we're in the business...
That's about the only methodology, Nikki can step in on this, but that's about the only methodology we have then to avoid the city have to just pay for that. Because if, if we've notified them and it's become an issue like this and, and they don't do anything, the liability's still there. And what we need to do according to our policy is to go ahead and take it out and replace it. And they, then we will bill the, the property owner and if they don't pay that, then it becomes a lien on their, on their property, which, you know, people can avoid paying for stuff for quite a while doing that, but eventually the piper becomes due when the property is sold, then it has to be settled. So eventually the city gets its money back and might not be for a while.
I understand that and that, so that's why I'm heavily advocating for a way for the city to, in addition, as part of the services in a city right-of-way, that we as the governing body of the city bears some of the cost associated with that. I know we have a lot of, you said we had 38 different areas that had been identified. And I think if we can work together on our committee and to identify yearly and have some funds allocated for that over time, we can, we can get, work through all of this. I, I just don't like the language of us imposing a lien on someone for something that we know that they can't afford.
Yeah, of course, that's always a last resort, but again, it's a liability issue. If we, if, say for instance, your sidewalks that you're looking at, someone trips on that, they're gonna sue you, they're gonna sue the city. And you know about it and so you don't have a very defensible case that goes forward. Same becomes true of the city if we ignore it once we're notified of it. So it's not something we can do to, or we shouldn't ignore it. But I do think if council identifies a funding source that it sets aside to go after these things when they come up, then certainly that's your prerogative to do that. That's, the street fund's a difficult one, it's, it's current expense, so we all know that that's kind of tough. We are, we budgeted $50,000 this year, I said in the memo 25, but we did in the amendment that was passed tonight and increased that to $50,000. We're using a chunk of that to do the grinding project that we talked about, which is getting ahead of this, by the way. We're not charging the property owners to go and grind these off, we could, but we're taking care of that with city funds already. And if you, if you elect to have us use more of that to replace these, these worse sidewalks, then we certainly, staff will do what you choose to direct us to do in that regard. I don't know that it changes what we're doing in the policy though, because we still need that tool, or should have that tool in place. Nikki, if you wanna chime in on that?
Sure, absolutely. So there is lean language in your current code and there's also lean language in your code enforcement code, which is essentially what this is, right? Municipalities have to have tools in order to ensure that there is a way of enforcing their codes and in your case, you've got lean language in and in other codes as well. Other codes have lean language. The reality is that that is really one of the only ways that you're going to be able to enforce this. And Mark's absolutely right that there is liability that is associated with sidewalks, both for the property owner and for the city. And there is case law out there that says essentially that if the city knows about a dangerous situation, then it has to correct it, essentially in this case, even if it's not the city's responsibility. So the lean process allows the city to recoup its losses and ensures that it has the ability to move forward with asking the property owners to, to repair their sidewalks and if they don't, there's, there's something that can be done about it.
Right. I think I'd also like to add, because it's what I always think about and I think all the other elected officials here think about, and that is our constituents. And if we're not taking the responsibility of looking out for their tax dollars, or for example, if somebody chooses not to repair their sidewalk and something happens, the city is sued, in reality, it's actually the citizens of Sejewili that are being sued. And so what we are asking of our citizen is to, you know, when you become a homeowner, there's a lot of responsibilities and yes, it costs a lot of money to do things, but what we're asking them to do is be responsible for that sidewalk. Number one, it'll save them the heartache of a suit, it'll save the citizens of Sejewili, because really that's what the city is, the citizens of Sejewili, the heartache of a suit, but more than that, it'll save somebody the heartache of being injured and who knows what that injury will look like. So it really, it boils down to that, you know. We, we know that there are those who do need help and I think the idea of putting in to place something where there can be some assistance, I think that's a great conversation to have. But in the meantime, we need to be looking out for the citizens of Sejewili, which is why we're here.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I would agree with that. I would like to see it go before the Public Works to develop a, a fund if possible, if you guys are able to, for the cases that are, that are extreme. I mean, if people want to replace their sidewalk because it doesn't look good or it's got a little grating on the top or something like that, that's on them. But if it's a case where it's gonna create a situation, maybe a match fund or something that the, that people can do. But a lot of people enjoy the sidewalk and that's kind of why, you know, it, I don't know if the whole thing should be buried on the homeowner. I don't have sidewalks, but I do walk all of them, when even where they're available. So I'm a taxpayer, I feel like I appreciate the, the sidewalks, so.
Well, I do want to point out that we are already participating in this and that wouldn't change. If, if we had a, a bad one, you know, we're still, we've still agreed that we're gonna remove the existing sidewalk. And in fact, as Nathan and I have talked about this, you know, we, we remove the sidewalk early because that's the hazard, we get it out of there. First thing we do if we see it, we paint it, you know, so it's obvious and visible. But then we remove it and gravel it. If, if, if we can't come to an agreement with the owner, we go ahead and remove it and gravel it. It's safe, okay? It's not sidewalk anymore and we'll get complaints about that as well, by the way, but it's safe and that's done. So it's not like we're gonna go back and charge them for what we already did. We've already agreed to do that, it's a part of our policy to remove it. So we're already participating in it to that level. And if we find more funds and where we want to do this, I don't know how we do it equitably, equitably, that's another question I guess we'll have to parse out and talk. Because, you know, you can pick this one, but there's 20 more of them, you know. I don't know, there's a lot of things to think about on this in that regard.
Could I add, maybe use the same approach that if possible on utility for seniors, people on fixed income, that kind of thing? I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think those are all good, just, good Public Works Committee discussion items.
It sounds like you're removing the hazard already and it's no charge on the homeowner. They just don't have as beautiful of a yard or valuable of a house, but the, the hazard's out of the way.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
That's the intention.
That's good. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion for the sidewalk replacement program, Resolution 1136-24.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock to make a motion to approve Resolution 113624, adopting the sidewalk replacement program and sidewalk replacement program policy documents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, thank you. That finishes our unfinished business. Moving on to new business, we have the grant approval, the raise, which we mentioned earlier. Mr. Freiberger.
Yes, so I've been mentioning for some time our Jones, John Liner Trail Road project and our ongoing efforts to fund that, which we've had a fair amount of success with. Attached to the memo is the updated project description, which shows of the projects that, of the original eight projects, we've actually made some progress on completing or funding a number of those, including the intersection at Township Street and John Liner Road, which is under design and will be constructed in 2025. And off, and then on the other end at Cook Road, the Bucko family, under the development agreement that we negotiated with them three years ago, two years ago, time is going, will be building that section across their property and I believe they're gonna start that this year. And we've acquired the, the right-of-way, the major right-of-way needed to finish North Trail Road, a couple of small corners to do yet, but most of that. And then the piece between FNS and, and Jones is already built by the developer of that Garden Meadows development that opened up last year. So we've made good progress. The federal raise grant opportunity, I, I'm not gonna try to tell you what all that acronym means, but it's under the Infrastructure and Investments Job Act that was passed two years ago, part of that $1.2 trillion program. And we've applied for this grant in the past, last year, we made it through the first two rounds of review and fell off under the benefit cost part of that. rounds of review and fell off under the benefit cost part of that. We submitted a, a very similar application last year, for it was a little bit more than twenty-three million dollars towards a twenty-nine million dollar project. This one is, is much the same as last year in terms of scope. It, it produces the core pieces of the corridor to make it a working corridor, that was the intent here, that would allow traffic to actually utilize it. The only part of our original plan of projects that wouldn't be completed under this would be the roundabout intersection that eventually will be necessary at North Trail Road and Cook, and that's where it diverges from Cook Road. It does include rebuilding the intersection at South Trail Road, existing Trail Road and Cook, as a part of these five projects that, that are shown in the component list. And so the total project, I have it outlined on the, in the memorandum and also on the brochure, but the total project is, with the five projects we're proposing, is thirty million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. The grant request will be providing twenty, get my right spot here, twenty-four million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The other six million or, or thereabouts that is match, we would be furnishing one million dollars of this proposal and that, of which we've already committed six hundred thousand for that, so this, this motion tonight would include committing an additional four hundred thousand dollars in local funds to the program. And I should speak a little bit about schedule. Because of the timeline that's required to get a grant application approved and then a contract awarded, we're about ten months out before that money would become real. And then from that part, there's a federal required environmental process, which for the two pieces of the program that touch water, we can be assured is going to take eighteen to twenty-four months. So if you've been adding, it's about three years before you could even consider starting the right-of-way process on at least two of those projects. That means that it's probably about three years out before you build the first one, and four to five for the other, other two. We're proposing with this, if it's funded, to begin the design process, though, as soon as we do have an agreement in place, so that we're ready to move forward with the rest of these when the opportunity permits. We would still have to come up with about four million dollars in additional matching funds. That's, that's a pretty reasonable Transportation Improvement Board ask. We have been in touch with the Transportation Improvement Board about this corridor for several years, met with their director a number of times. They've already funded one program, one project, that's the intersection project. They're very interested in this corridor succeeding as well, so I'm pretty confident we'll be able to come up with those additional match funds, either solely through TIB or through TIB, and as I mentioned in the memo, an additional grant of federal funds through the Skagit Council of Governments, which will be eligible for again in about two years. We, we were awarded the design phase funds for project number one, with this last round that was completed in two thousand and twenty-three. So I know it's a lot of words and a lot of things, but the bottom line is, is we're asking for your authorization to submit this application, which is due on February the twenty-eighth, so we can't wait for another council meeting on it, and to commit those additional four hundred thousand dollars in funds for the program. Now, I have in the back of the memo, the arterial project listing analysis that we keep up with these grant applications and projects as we build them, showing how we will provide our local funds for this. And the, the location of the funds, or the source of the funds, is our real estate excise tax funds, which are eligible for this use. Again, the construction phase of these projects wouldn't take place for about three years, and I've aged the funds down through time and looked at all of the other projects that we've already got in our tip, and we, we will be fine. We have enough funds to have at least a million and a half dollar fund balance between our four arterial projects eligible fund sources, through the limit of what I looked at in that analysis, which was through two thousand and twenty-seven, to move forward with this. So that's, that's enough from me. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you.
So any questions for Mark?
Yeah, I got one. So we need another four hundred, four hundred thousand to match, and that's going to be coming out of our REIT funds, right?
Correct.
And so when do we have to pony up that four hundred thousand? Like, on the twenty-eighth?
No, no.
Or?
It's, it's, it's just a commitment, and what'll go along with this is the mayor will sign a letter that is more or less a support letter, and it commits this million dollars we're talking about, the six which we've already authorized, plus another, another four. That goes into the grant application package. They see, yes, the city, this is real money, but we don't have to spend the money until we actually get to the point where we need it. And the six hundred thousand, we actually have in the design phase for the first project, so that would be spent in twenty-five and twenty-six, and the other four hundred thousand would, would be slightly later than that. So it's down the road a ways before we actually have to produce those funds.
Okay, so for the entire cost of this about twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollar project altogether, all, all of that grant funding that we're going to get, is there shelf life on that for project completion time?
The funds under the RACE program have to be expended by two thousand and thirty-three, I believe it is, so there's plenty of time to complete all of this. It's quite a, quite a long program. I think it was ten years from the inception of that program is what it, what it is.
So we would be prudent to do these projects now, instead of ten years from now, when the labor cost has tripled?
Well, that's another story, that you'll see if, if you read the memo carefully, when we first started estimating these projects, they were about thirty-four, thirty-five million dollars, and it's now up to fifty-one million, and that's inflation, and it's been, been really galloping on us on transportation projects the last few years. So the quicker you can get them, get them designed and, and bid and built, the better off you are. We have inflated these estimates to allow for this. These estimates are inflated to the construction year that, that we anticipate they will take place. You can rest assured that staff will try to move them along faster than that, if we can. If we can gain a year, we'll gain a year's inflation on the projects, which will, which will be very helpful for saving funds for the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavaca?
Mark, I believe we're up against a wall in this one anyways. We need the project to go through, we're running out of resources, and so applying for grants is kind of shooting in a barrel, but hopefully one, one sticks. So, you know, I'm in favor of doing this one. I know that Inslee was over at the school, has got relationships with people on Seidra Woolley, maybe he thinks twice about vetoing that, who knows? But I, I would put a motion forward to see this grant program for the two thousand and twenty-four RACE application put forward.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve the submission of the two thousand and twenty-four RACE application, which is due on the twenty-eighth of this month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. So I know I had mentioned to you that the document that was put out by Nikki, that we would have that at the very end, if it's okay with the council, if we could just move that ahead, because the last item we're going to be discussing is the city council goal setting, and I don't know that our attorney needs to be here for that necessarily, unless she wants to, but if the council is comfortable, could we move forward with?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the document in question is, there's two things. Nikki was recommending that amendments be made to the council rules of procedure to eliminate the remote comments, except for in situations where an ADA accommodation is requested in advance. And the second motion would be to recommend terminating the use of proclamations. So I know this is a conversation you want to have. This, of course, is document that was put out by our attorney, has to do with the antisemitic, anti-semitic remarks that have been made, both at the Stanwood and the Anacortes, I don't know if anybody has watched those council meetings. In my opinion, they're really quite, I did watch them, I also read the articles, I think they're quite heinous. My thought on it is that I really hate to see that some, is something, those comments, we do YouTube with our meetings, they go on our website, and anytime something heinous is made, it's forever embedded on that YouTube for people to hear. So I fully understand where she is coming from, but I'm going to open that up, and I believe, Mr. Henderson, you made the motion to pull this, to talk about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to have an open discussion, since it was emailed to all of us, and it's something the public might be interested in hearing, too. One of, one of the points that stood out to me was the broad and varied public commentary that this technically isn't a town hall meeting, and to only talk about city business. So that, that would exclude, for instance, having someone come in and talk about something that is not on our agenda, right?
So we didn't, we, we didn't put in there prohibitions on talking about things not on the agenda. We, the recommendation was just to limit it to items of interest to this, to city business, right? The things that you, as the elected members of the legislative body, have legislative control over. If there is interest in starting up town hall type meetings where everyone can talk about whatever they would like to speak about, I think that's a great idea as well. The thought was, though, to limit the city business meetings, which are the city council meetings, to city business, in an attempt to really give the council some ability to say, no, we're not going to listen to these long-winded antisemitic commentaries, under the guise of, of some connection to something of interest to the city. But, you know, the recommendations in that email, they are, they're broad, and if you want to talk about, you know, simply limiting public comment online, that's perfectly acceptable. If you want to talk about still allowing online commentary, but requiring the people to show their faces, that's also something we could talk about. These were broad suggestions that were designed to stimulate conversation on the issue in an attempt to address something that is becoming commonplace. It's, it's not just, I know Bellingham's got hit as well, and there's other, I mean, across the country, this has become an issue since we've now got this great tool that is Zoom, but it's also unfortunately become a, a tool of those that aren't actually trying to participate in city government.
Understood. So is Woody here?
Yes, I'm here.
So when we have disruptive behavior within the meeting, like if somebody comes up to the stand and starts screaming at us, and we're saying these things in, in real life to our faces, being disruptive in the meeting, they'd be asked to leave?
It depends on if, if it's truly something that would fall under disorderly conduct, right?
Would, so would, would these videos that we've been seeing from Bellingham, Stanwood, Ordin, all these other cities, would that be considered disruptive behavior, or is that First Amendment protected speech?
It's not disruptive behavior, they're, they're not acting in a manner that is disruptive. However, they are speaking on topics that are not related to city business.
And, and they're doing it online? They're not doing it in public, coming before the council?
So if you, if, if you would like a full analysis, a legal analysis from a First Amendment perspective, I, I would rather provide that in the form of a confidential memo. Again, these recommendations, they, they are broad. Probably the simplest way to address this is to say, we're not going to take public comment via Zoom unless it is requested in advance, like somebody needs an accommodation of some sort, and, and we'll happily give them that. But, you know, online is where this problem is stemming from.
Madam Mayor, I like the suggestion of a little bit more analysis on the First Amendment. As a former journalist, I'm a big supporter of the First Amendment. However, I just wonder if that allows people with an agenda in a distant state, probably, with nothing, that has nothing to do with city business, to force both us and our community, including children, to listen to antisemitic hatred? So I, I know it's a difficult subject for everyone, councils across the state, but I think, oh, one, one question I had is, people sign in here to give public comment, do they have to do that online, too, or is that not something they have to do?
They do not.
So we don't even know who they are when they show up on a Zoom public meeting, and then we don't know where they're from, or, I mean, I, I, I have problems with saying we need to know what you're going to say, but if we ask for people's information in person, why can't we do that online?
They don't have to give their personal information.
I mean, not personal information, just who they are.
They're not being truthful. So there was one woman in Stanwood last week who identified herself as Mitzi Buffet, and that's the name of, I think, Phoebe Buffet's hamster on Friends, and then, of course, Phoebe Buffet. They're making up names, and they're saying that they, that they live in, in the city, or they just moved here, and none of it's true.
And is, another question, getting to the disorderly thing, what if someone goes online and makes direct threats to either us or members of our community? Can that be shut off? Maybe Woody would answer that. That's a tough call.
Real threats.
Real threats where I'm gonna, whatever, I don't even want to throw out any ideas.
Yes, but the definition of a true threat is actually fairly narrow, and this is actually a question for Heather. So it's actually a very, very narrow definition, and so you would basically have to say, I'm going to do this to this person in this location at this time. It is difficult to shut someone down because of a, of a threat.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I think dancing around the question of the First Amendment is dangerous. First of all, there's four hundred members that we elected in Congress who can change that, should they so please, and they have not, because our founders put that into place for a reason, and it gives America a lot of right. Some people are going to say things that we don't want to hear, maybe we don't want our children hearing it, might write things we don't want to hear. They've tried to ban stuff a number of times, and what they've come to is, with the freedom to express yourself, you're going to have some people who say things you don't want to hear, and that's the freedom of speech. Once we start saying we appreciate the freedom of the First Amendment, as long as we can limit it within our criteria, it's no longer the freedom of the First Amendment. So that's where I would run into complications with that. I would not want to hear any of that stuff, I won't want those disruptive meetings, and so I'm not advocating, yeah, let's just have that. I'm sure there's a way if we put their face on, or if they have to identify their address, just like they do in the council, things like that, but we have to anticipate, people are going to say things that we might not want to hear in public and in life, and that's okay. They might post something, they might put a comment on our Facebook we might not want to hear, but are we willing to let that go for, for the First Amendment? And with all due respect, Nikki, I appreciate all your skill set, I just don't know that you're, you, you could probably write something for us, but you're not an expert necessarily in constitutional law to superside the Constitution, right, or Congress? So we would want to take that up with, with them, really, I feel. I do understand where the problem is, and I, I feel that it's unfortunate that we have that, but that's why those people are doing it, especially, it seems like, in those communities, to start shutting down that ability for, for members of the community to speak freely.
And that's where I, Madam Mayor, I, that's why I think a little bit more analysis on First Amendment. First Amendment. There are limits on First Amendment. You can't, for example, shout fire in a crowded theater. So I would just like a little bit more information on that. I don't want to, I agree, I don't want to go erode anyone's First Amendment rights. But on the other hand, I mean, are we just going to allow people to spew hatred during our meetings? It's, it's a, it's an interesting and very difficult question.
So one of the things that I would point out is that First Amendment rights are at their peak in an open public forum. This is not an open public forum. It is a limited public forum. And that is why we are having this conversation. If this was an open public forum, we would not be having this conversation. There are ways that we can, you know, within limits, restrict what people are saying in a limited public forum. We can say, this is a business meeting and we are only soliciting comments on things that are related to the business of the city. But again, I'm happy to provide additional memorandum on the First Amendment interplay here. This is something that we work frequently with in our positions as municipal lawyers. And so we can certainly provide that if you would like.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
My thoughts on it are mixed. I don't want to restrict people's freedom of speech. I think it is deeply important to our country as a whole. I do also consider that for well over 100 years, Seidra Woolley did not accept online comments for their city council meetings and that this is a very new thing. I believe at the very minimum, verifying who a person is, if we're going to allow online comment is reasonable, because we need to know that we're hearing from our constituents. If we're going to let something play into our decision-making especially, I feel like it should be someone who's actually a resident of our community as opposed to someone who's from the outside. So at bare minimum, just knowing where they're from, whether or not they're actually a resident, making them put in information so that they are at least not anonymous would be my, my minimum for that. I do believe that we should hear people out, at least about the business that we have before us, but I, I don't want to go trampling on anyone's rights as far as restricting what we do any further than absolutely necessary to keep it civil, but giving them their, their freedom.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I'm, I'm in agreeance with Councilmember Lavaca. I do however, believe that somebody that is providing public comment via Zoom should identify themselves and be seen on the screen as if they would be standing here in front of us. There's no reason why somebody should be giving public, public comment without a voice behind it. If they want to do that without a voice, they can send their letters in. And so that would be my two cents there.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Gustin?
I, I agree with Councilmember Lavaca and Diamond, that there should be a face to the name. Even if it's made up, you should show us who you are.
So.
Well, I was going to say, the first thing I thought of is the mayor could have a kill switch and somebody starts something, you just kill it and I couldn't care less about their First Amendment rights. Let them sue us if they start causing trouble.
That's where I brought up the issue of a threat, being able to stop that.
Well, you can, you could probably stop it, take you two or three words and hit your thumb on the button.
Just so, so we're clear, we're, sounds like we're discussing making online and in person basically the same rules, unless, you know, somebody wants to walk in here wearing a COVID mask and then we can't see their face. And then they say, it's the same thing if they're on the computer behind a COVID mask. It makes really very little difference with, with what we're seeing, because we can't be like, oh, I know that guy, that's, you know, whoever. And he's giving us a fake name. So I don't know, I don't really know how to address that, other than if they're a person, they should get, you know, their free speech. And if they're going way off the rails, where, where does, where does it go from being free speech to being disruptive in a meeting? I mean, because there's lots of things that I don't want to hear in life, but I have to hear them anyways, because other people have the right to say them, whether I agree with them or not. So that's just kind of my two cents on it.
Councilwoman Diamond, you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to ask that, I mean, if something were to be completely out of line, is, is that just a situation where the mayor could, would then, you know, cut them off and let them know that they were going to be disconnected? And then Woody could, you know, IT can just go ahead and mute that? So it's, it's not for everybody to hear? Just as if somebody was here and was getting out of hand and beyond their time limit and everything else, where they would be cut off and, and asked to, to stop?
Beyond their time limit, you could certainly cut them off. But you know, that's why we've been talking about maybe making some changes to the rules, because right now there aren't rules about the topics that can be discussed. And there aren't really good parameters in place that would allow you to keep things between the lines, right? They can say whatever they want to say.
If I may, Madam Mayor? Yeah, I was looking into this and let's say that, that we put that, or the council at whatever time, put in the camping van ordinance. And, and so people can't have that. And then it was just the RV sites. And I think there was a video out about that. So somebody finds out about that, they come into the council and that's two, three years later, totally different council, and they just start cussing us out, calling us names, all that stuff. They have every right of their freedom of speech to do that. We don't want to hear it, but there is legal precedents and they could win a lawsuit and there has been lawsuits that have been filed because the mayor has shut them down or had them escorted out by the police and the police are not immune from, from the law when it comes to that. So they too also got in trouble for, for that, because they were not making threats. They were just exercising their free speech. That is a risk we have as, as public officials and as elected bodies. And that's, it, it would be unfortunate that happens. And that hasn't happened. Sometimes we do have people come in here and they vent about things that have happened in the community. And they, they direct that venting directly to us. And we, we kind of have to be emotionless behind the, behind the wall here, but it, you know, it's something that we care about and we think about them. But they have the right to vent. And I think that that's what we're looking at, is somebody could just be absolutely off the wall, not making threats, they have three minutes to do so. We haven't experienced that, but at this point, at this junction, do we want to go that route? Right? I would venture not. I think our community is pretty, pretty sound. I like the idea of identification online. You have to do it here. And you know, I mean, it's easy to, to be online and do that stuff, but a lot harder when you have to have your camera on. And you read the name through and there's got to be some sort of, maybe we can have them show an ID or verify an address, put in an address that they have in town, something.
We can't do that. We can't ask them for their address.
We ask them for their address when they come into the council, when they come up front, we ask them to give their address.
We changed that.
We don't, we, we ask them for their connection to the city.
Yeah, yeah. That's just been recently too, though. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, you're right, we did before.
I, I like the idea of having somebody at least sign in with a name online. If we, can we get away with that legally? I mean, it seems pretty basic. And then look into the First Amendment rights, because I, I agree, it's, it's very touchy. For example, years ago, the American Nazi Party asked to march through Skokie, Illinois, where there were numerous concentration camp survivors and went all the way through the courts and they were allowed to do it on First Amendment. So yeah, we don't want to trample on any First Amendment rights. On the other hand, we have the issue of people wanting to make anti-semitic remarks and we, you know, we have Jewish members of the community, I'm sure, who will not appreciate that, but maybe that's a, that's something we have to live with.
So there is an option here. I know that Nikki has offered to come before us and talk about, do some research and talk about the Constitution, possibly First Amendment rights. I don't know what we have going on. I'm trying to think of our schedule, Kelly, for the first work session in March. Is there anything scheduled for that? Is that something, or even in April, where we could actually bring this conversation forward and have this again?
I don't have it in front of me, but I don't believe so. And I think Nikki was talking about something confidential, but I'll let Nikki speak to that.
I was, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. This is, it's a legal analysis that would be best provided via a confidential memorandum. So not something to be discussed in open chambers.
Okay. All right, well, with that then, I guess there'll be probably more to come on that, but it is, we are at the eight o'clock hour. And I, if the council is not opposed, I am wanting to finish up this council meeting by going through the city council goal setting. Is the council all amenable to that or do they want to adjourn?
I think that's good.
I would have loved to have seen this conversation at a round table for one of our first meetings in the month, but I don't know if that's something the rest of the council is interested in or if you want to go forward.
I'm, I'm hoping that we, because it's every two years and it's stated in here that we do a Saturday event or something like that for a six-hour event. And actually, not with a moderator, not somebody to come in, but just us around a table with some coffee and crackers and go through this list and kind of talk about it. There's some things on here marked out as complete that I, like the website, I can't really find that interactive map. We didn't really update any pictures. We didn't really do a lot on that side. So just to recap some of these items on there and see, and spend a few hours again to go through. I don't know.
All right, so I think what we'll do then is probably send out some dates and just go ahead and have a council retreat. I use that word lightly. I think the last one that I held was here in the chamber and we, what did we go for, Sarah, you were there? Was it maybe five hours or something?
It was, it was less.
Less than that?
Yeah.
I know we ended with lunch.
Roundtable and it was a very good open discussion. Everybody in, I felt like that was, it was a good meeting.
Yeah, and it was, and we, we ended with lunch, I think is what we did. So if you're open to that, we can do that. I think we did do it towards the end of the week. We did do it a weekday, did we not?
We did have one that was an evening, I think. And then there was, and then we've had one that was a Saturday.
Okay. So we'll put times and days it out and some options, if that's okay with the council? And then we'll just see what works for everybody?
Yeah, there's no way we can get through all this. We need hours. Yep.
All right, good deal.
It'd be awesome.
All right, well, that's exciting for us to hear. Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Can I just say one thing? I wanted to thank Charlie because you got rid of the keyboard drawer. So thank you very much. And if I could just ask for one more thing, it's just a little bit more heat, because I'm freezing.
Thank you. It is cold in here, I agree. All right, so I believe, let me check the agenda, I believe that that is it. Everybody have a wonderful evening and we are adjourned. Thank you.